We'll call the meeting to order. My apologies for the Internet gremlins doing us in. I will um call the roll. Uh, I should have done that first. So we're recording. All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Beth Steele say here because we don't see all screens. Nip Tanner.
Here.
Uh, thank you Dana Oviet.
Here.
Uh Larry Dunn is seated for Blake Powell who is absent.
Here.
Okay, and I'm Rick Smith, and now I will read that uh statement. This meeting of the Knowing Zoning Commission will take place through Zoom remote meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith, Chairman of the Commission. Host of the Zoom meeting is Larry Dunn, who's an alternate zoning commission member. Participants in the meeting will be the commission members, elected alternates, staff, and the commission's counsel if he joins. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time they speak. If you want to comment on an item, raise your hand so we can see you or speak up so your your image comes up on the screen and then raise your hand. Um, I'll call on you. I have the opportunity to speak at that point. If we get a lot of feedback, you'll have to mute your microphones, but right now it seems pretty good and and I'm hoping everybody is unmuted. So we're not having a feedback problem. Uh, to offer a motion, commissioners should physically raise their hand in front of the screen. To vote on a motion, commissioners will be called on upon individually, so effectively everything will be a roll call vote because of not seeing everyone all the time. Members of the public can submit comments by writing to the commission at our email address nfdzoning@gmail.com. Uh, after the meeting. Finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. And importantly, because this is a little bit abnormal, we are in the midst of a public hearing. So uh when I say the public can submit a written comment, that's in the context of being in the public hearing and it'll become part of the hearing record. And I'll have a little bit more to say about that as we go on. The agenda items for tonight's meeting are a presentation of procedural options in connection with the Esker Point Beach sand replenishment application. Uh, consideration of hiring an outside expert to assist the commission and consideration of a referral on the proposal to the Connecticut DEP. And associated discussion and action on those items. This is not a continuation of the public hearing. It's a business meeting of the commission. There will be no public comment. The public hearing has been continued to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. That's why I said a moment.
Bang Zoom.
All right, we are restarting the recording after an interrupt. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
And that, I believe, had concluded. I had read the agenda items. Okay, and importantly, because we are in the public hearing, we have to try and refrain from talking about the overall issue facing us. As opposed to the items on the agenda. Now, I talked to John about that today and he said that with some limitations on, you know, reasonableness. We obviously have to be able to talk about the whole issue as we decide whether we want to hire an expert and whether we want to refer this to DEP. So I'm just gonna have to kind of watch and if I think we're getting in too far into details of the proposed application and far afield from the uh the two agenda items. Try and, you know, get us back in direction. This is gonna be a painful process for all of us, so bear with me. Uh, the first thing to talk about is uh, some rules of engagement, which I learned today and did not know at the time. Even outside the hearing process. Uh, we're not supposed to go looking for expert advice on our own. We're supposed to read the file, visit the site is okay, but going to contact an expert, whether it's a person or an agency or any independent investigation on our part, we have to refrain from. So I just offer that as part of what John uh told me. And beyond that, um, we have had at least one instance where in good faith, someone did make that kind of an inquiry before the hearing started. I thought that was okay. Apparently it's not. So have that commissioner uh disclose that now, describe what he asked, what he heard as an answer, and therefore we as John points out, that's how we salvage the situation so we stay in bounds according to the rules. So Dana.
Yep. So Dana Oviet, for the record, I spoke with Frank Boland on December tenth at ten twenty-six AM. And also on December fifteenth at twelve oh seven AM. This was before the Noak zoning commission's public hearing on the application by the town of Groton to consider Esker Point Beach for nourishment at seven PM on December fifteenth. Frank is a friend of mine and I called him so as to better understand the general nature and history of sand erosion along Connecticut shorelines in preparation for the application.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to make a similar type of a disclosure? Okay, hearing no one. I have one that-
Rick, I I've got kind of one, so. You can hear me? Yeah, Larry Dunn.
Yep.
So I have another role as chairman of the Conservation Commission and we've just completed a study which is out in the public domain of uh of many things, one of which is the shoreline and the impact of climate change and what should be done about it. So I haven't talked to anybody or sought any vice specific to this topic. But there is a lot of information, a lot of background working on for the last couple of years in regards to this uh specific area, so um, I might allude there as as we go through this, I may or may not uh allude to some of those studies and inputs. Uh, but it's all, let's call it historic and public information.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
Rick, I've got a a question. It
Okay.
As I understand the purpose of this meeting.
This is Nip Tanner, by the way.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Sorry. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is for us to decide if we want expert advice for the commission. And I'm assuming that if we make a decision that we do want expert advice, that we're not in violation of what you said at the beginning that we're prohibited from soliciting expert advice.
No, at that point, we would use Bill and John, more Bill to guide us in searching out an appropriate expert. Uh, where John says we get out of bounds is if we go and talk to, like, if I were to call an expert at URI and talk about this whole thing, glean information from that person. And then we did or we didn't hire him as an expert, that's out of bounds. But if we vote tonight to hire an expert, then we get that expert on board. How John advises us to interact, to get our views across, I have no idea. I haven't crossed that bridge with him yet. Uh, but, you know, we have to take it stepwise and then do as he suggests to make sure we don't run afoul of court. It's more court precedence than it is law, but they're they're driving this thing, so we we have to be cognizant of them.
It seems somewhat illogical, but-
I agree. I agree. It's it's uh it's very cumbersome, but we pay him for good advice. We gotta take it or have a darn good reason why not. You know, I haven't had a good reason yet.
Well, there's a there's a precedent in in terms of the Halsey architectural designer view is, I believe, the zoning commission hired its own expert to evaluate the uh those design. Bill could probably speak more directly to that than I can, but I I believe the commission made the decision they wanted their own expert and they hired one.
Okay, let let's let me go through this the way I've orchestrated it and, you know, we'll get to that a little bit farther downstream. Any other disclosures for the record? Okay, not hearing anyone. I'm gonna disclose one that's not that kind of a disclosure, but on John's advice, this is how he recommends I deal with this. I had refrained at the last, at the first part of the hearing uh from asking, answering things based on my own work experience, expertise, call it what you will, training. In the future part of the hearing, if I decide to start to be more of a detail detail oriented person and use my own experience and training as background, I need to disclose that. So briefly, here goes. Not only am I the chairman of the commission, but I have a master in marine science and marine ecology. I do not have any degrees or studies in physical oceanography. Sir, I was a an employee of the Department of Environmental Protection for thirty-three years and ended up as a director of marine fisheries. And generally, you assimilate things that you hear from people like other parts of DEP and experts along the way and if I choose to comment in more detail than it might seem appropriate, that's the background that John recommended I give you so that you know from whence I'm coming. Um, okay, so the issues and now up where Nip had gotten us to, uh, we have the expert uh person, whether we decide to hire one, the DEP referral. And falling from those, we may get to a point where we want to tee up an extension of the hearing or not, but it's premature to do that right now. So let's um it's probably easier to take them one at a time, but they are intertwined and there'll probably be some crossover. So uh, who would like to go first on the issues? You'll have to speak up so that your image comes up. Okay, Nip.
Nip Tanner, as I think I I've said in the, while we're in the public hearing, I would very much like to get some expert advice from an appropriate expert who looks at Esker Point and evaluates what's going on in terms of the erosion. In the hearing, we heard reports that there were three sources of water coming from inland uh plus wind waves probably tides causing erosion. And I would like somebody who knows a lot more about all of that than I do to look at the situation, advise us what is causing the erosion and offer options of what could be done to control it. I think, just thinking about possible sources of such expert advice, uh, I am of the impression that there's a department, Yukon Lake Point, which may have such expertise at hand. We've mentioned DEP and we'll get to that. I here an email with the commission that my experience in dealing with DEP on a hundred-year-old dam that needed some serious repairs, that they were unwilling to offer advice on what to do. They viewed their job as to tell me I had to hire an expert and they would then review the recommendations that an expert and advise whether they were acceptable or not. However, even though I've had that experience, I'm not against reaching out to DEP and asking appropriate people there, tell them what our situation is and say, are you in a position to advise us what's going on and what we need to do to deal with it?
Okay. Uh, next person, who else speak so your image comes up?
On Rick.
Larry.
Yep, Larry Dunn. Um, I I'm also in favor of getting some expert input, but it's a, we need to be careful of the scope of work for such a project because it's not just a question of looking at erosion. Uh, when you take the big picture is you know, the nature is just trying to reclaim what, you know, what we did over the years to artificially create a beach where there wasn't one. Uh, and if you look at climate change coming in in the next twenty, thirty years or so, there may not be anything there anyway. So I think we need to look, we need to get the expert opinion, but we need to be very careful on uh the set of questions we want to ask and what, you know, I don't say what the answer we want, but we are looking for a a certain set of recommendations. And it can't just be, I think, limited to, and I don't, I'm not talking about what Nip just said, but it's not a question of how do we limit erosion, but taking the longer view of, you know, what happens to that piece of land and you know, if if we have to keep throwing money after this and finally in twenty years it goes away, we have to know that and make a decision of is twenty years worth of use of the beach worth whatever money would take to withstand it. Um, and I'd also like to know the cost of such a uh, a hire or a study, uh, because we're not a, we're not a rich little town in terms of the amount of money we have to spend on this stuff. So that would be the sec, the other question I would have. So it's scope and cost to simplify my uh question.
All right, uh, and I'm realizing from all the various notes I have here that I took things a little bit out of order compared to the way I wanted to. I wanted to build to summarize uh, where he got to in his conversations with uh Keith Nielsen of Daco. So you could be aware of how they're responding to the questions. Again, we don't need to talk in details about substance, but the process that Bill got to and where he thinks they're going to come in with uh their response. Uh, Bill, could you go ahead then and kind of summarize?
I I could. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill Mulholland, the zoning guy. Um, I spoke to Keith this morning at length for approximately thirty-five, forty minutes and going into great detail. Um, I did not attend your last meeting on the subject, but I am familiar with it. Um, some of the things we need to pay attention to is we have to deal with the applications before us. That's our concentration. That's our focus. There are probably other issues um that everybody is curious about. Um, our jurisdiction stops at the coastal jurisdictional line, which is about a foot above mean high water. Below that is the jurisdiction of the Connecticut DEP and others. Um, so the commission's attention has to be on the application. Um, in my conversation with Keith, um, he informed me that they're going to address all the questions that the commission had and any other questions that were brought forward. They are going to attempt to satisfy all of those issues and so at this point, we haven't heard that continued testimony as yet. So the the issue is going to be your judgments, in my opinion, on whether you're going to hire a consultant or not should be based on the record of the hearing, which we has yet to be completed. And it's my understanding that they are going to uh discuss some different different methodologies to address all the concerns. And I will just point out there may be a reduction of the scope of their intended work. Um, and they will share that with you at the next meeting. So based on my information, I think the commission will find that they are attempting to address the issues at hand. They certainly can't satisfy the historical issues of creation of the beach, et cetera, et cetera, and and I don't know that this is where we're going to satisfy the the future issues long term as as Larry has brought up, which are of great concern to everyone. Um, but legally, we need to focus on just the application. A referral to DEP, if I may, Mr. Chairman, typically is a courtesy referral and and uh Nip, your comments are well taken. I have had similar experiences. Um, they're not going to solve the problem. They're gonna tell us or or tell the applicant to hire an expert. I don't think they will provide that. I've interacted with them for thirty-four years. Um, and it's also my understanding that from Keith that there's a change in the DEP person that is going to be our contact for CAM issues. And I believe it's going to be the same person I've dealt with here for years. Uh, that person will act as a fill-in. Um, and generally what will, in my experience, will probably receive on a courtesy referral is consider these things because their referral is gonna be based on the coastal area management site plan review issues. And what they're looking to find is that there are no adverse impacts or potential adverse impacts on coastal resources. You're gonna decide that um at some point in the future. Um, I think we need to be very careful about, you know, are we looking to get a consultant in before you need one? If we haven't heard the entire case and and how the applicant is going to address your questions and those of anyone else involved in the public hearing should be the basis for your decision-making. Um, so that should be based on the entire record. So my advice would be you may want to wait and make that decision at a later date. In addition, that also touches on a continuation. You have sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing in which to make a decision. You can get an extension, but the applicant must grant that. They do not have to do so. So typically what happens is at the uh public hearing, at some point, the commission may ask for that. Typically, an applicant is going to grant it if the commission's asking. It's in their best interest. Um, I don't know the answer to that factually, but we'll see what what happens. So in terms of a consultant, um, Larry's point is well taken. What is the scope? What is that you're looking for? Our issues are really, we're supposed to focus on the application with our jurisdiction. There are other things going on, as everybody knows, and a lot of people have firsthand knowledge of the area. Um, I remember when it uh wasn't a beach, as a young man going down to Groton Point, so um, there's a long history there. We're not gonna correct that now. Um, but with that said, it's certainly up to the commission what you choose to do. But I think you're going to find some interesting input from the town and from Keith, and I also understand um, the head of Parks and Rec will be attending the next meeting as well to answer more broad type questions. So I think you'll make a lot of headway based on the input as I'm being told by Keith and what they've proposed to do. And I think there will be a reduction in the scope of what they're asking to do, but I don't want to say anymore because the applicant is not present to hear us and we need to be careful what we talk about.
Okay, thanks, Bill, and uh I was trying to fix my technical problem so I can be back in the the regular uh meeting and it's very awkward for me on my handheld phone. Did you mention the fact that Frank Boland is working with Keith now?
Uh, I did not mention that now, but um Keith says they're preparing a report and they're gonna submit that and you you will have that and I guess it's quite lengthy and he uh was sending it over to Frank for a summary view. Apparently, there's some type of relationship there. I guess Keith is presenting the application, but I believe there's some input from Frank to Keith.
Right. Okay. Right, um Dana or Beth before I do?
Go ahead, Beth, do you want?
Having heard Bill speak and my thought is to, I thought we were under more of a time crunch, but since we have sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing and not from current, my thought is maybe we should wait and see what the app, what additional information the applicant has to provide so that we can evaluate that and then make the determination as to whether or not we need additional expertise. That's my thought. And I also, I'm not in favor, just based upon what Nip said and what Bill confirmed. I don't think a referral to DEP is gonna do us any good. So the expert may, but um, you know, if we're gonna hire one, we probably wanna be able to perhaps refine um, our directives to that expert. And I think in order to do that, we need to get more information from the applicant because nothing, I'm not trying to be derogatory as to the gentleman from DACA, but he really didn't have any information. Um, so hopefully this time they come forth with more that could help us.
Okay.
Yeah, Dana Oviet. I I have three questions for for uh John. Um, you said legally, we have to consider the application. What what does that mean and what does that imply?
Do you mean Bill?
I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah, I just, obviously, I'm not an attorney, but I do have some some experience. Anytime we review an application, this is a special exception or a special permit in 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 Noak, we call it a special exception and a coastal area management site plan review. So they are both very specific and structured applications. Our review process is is uh very pertinent to the issue at hand. We have to make certain findings under CAM. And it's very specific and they have to be written findings. And under a special exception, um, he's asking to fill. And the rule of thumb is if they meet the regulations, they're entitled to a permit. Um, you probably have more flexibility under the CAM uh portion of the application because they're really, it's one application, but with two parts to it. Um, and either one of those parts can be denied or approved or slightly modified. Um, so we want to concentrate and make sure we focus on what our responsibility is. Granted, we're all curious on some of the broader issues in 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 climate change, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but when we're looking on these applications, we end up in a court along, let's say we we made a decision and it was litigated. They're gonna review the the case file. They're gonna review the public hearing record because the decision actually made on that record. And uh, so we want to make sure that um we follow that process and and the commission has done a fine job over the years along with the chairman and and focusing on that, but this one, um, in my opinion, is a little more sensitive. Um, initially, it started out with, in my opinion, just addressing the beach area, but there's a historic problem. But our focus has to be on the application. If there are other issues that need to be resolved or addressed, they're going to be possibly through other agencies or other disciplines, in my opinion.
Okay, uh, my my second question is, and you probably not be able to comment on it that much, but has the application, to your knowledge, substantially changed since we, since they described it two weeks ago?
I don't have the answer to that. You're absolutely right because I haven't seen their presentation. Um, if the scope of it is less than what they initially started out, if they start with a very broad application and they reduce it, typically that's acceptable. Um, if they did not do that and they were headed in the other direction and tried to expand it, we'd probably have to start over with new publications and a new hearing, but at this point, I don't think we need to do that. And again, we haven't seen what their presentation is. I had a nice conversation. He brought me up to speed acting on behalf of the commission, uh, trying to ensure that the next meeting is purposeful for all parties. And typically, sometimes when a public hearing runs a couple of different meetings, the first session is not always as fruitful as it could be as uh as different groups in different positions are uh are uh established and then As uh, as different groups in different positions are uh, are uh, established and then later on. Typically, the applications are fleshed out a little bit more and I think that's what's gonna occur at the next meeting.
Okay, and I have one more question for you. Is there any plan by either, you may not notice or not, but is there any plan by the applicant? Um, or or by uh, anybody else to submit? The results of the, what what I understand was a two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen study. Uh, by the town of Groton, um, and there was apparently something worked up then. Um, which we don't, to my knowledge, have to read.
Yeah, my my understanding is there is a report that he referred to that they're working up and I think that's part of it, but I don't. Know that, I can't guarantee that, but I think that's going to be part of it. You know, as I, as I explained, uh, um, to Keith and as as you probably know, I've worked with a lot of applicants over the years, not only over there, but here too. And uh, my view is it behooves them to be transparent and put everything on the table. And try to move the process forward and uh, that was part of my conversation today to ensure that you have all the information you need. To make an informed decision when it's time to to uh, analyze all of the data that they put into the record.
Yeah, and it's not just Keith and DACA that that need to be transparent. It's the town of Groton that need to provide us with the information from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I mean, that's.
Well, it is.
That's critical information.
Yeah, with all due respect, in your view, it may be critical information. But they may not view it as part of this application. Um, in the broader picture, it may well be, we just have to tread lightly. Um, I always anticipate we're going to court on every application I've ever processed. And that allows us to prepare better and to be ready if we do, and I think we're in very good shape. Uh, at this point, but um, I don't have all the answers at this this stage.
Uh, I mean, the only reason I bring it up is because that report may or may not can contain a lot of information. That we might be searching for when we entertain the uh, the possibility of 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 purchasing our own. Our own expert um, to answer these questions.
Understood.
So I'm caught between a rock and a hard spot. Um, I I without additional information, I couldn't make it. This is, this is just for the. For the commission too. I'm just speaking for the commission. I can't, I'm voicing my opinion. I couldn't make a decision without an expert coming in. Uh, on the cases, on the applications that stands now, but on the other hand, if number one. Is substantially changed, I'm wondering whether it would be wise just to wait if we have the time.
Um, one question I have, you're calling it a two thousand sixteen report?
I, it's, you know, it was mentioned in 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 the test and and the comments that were, the comments that we had. Two weeks ago by the uh. The people and.
Yeah, what I can do as staff, I have a right to contact the applicant and have these kind of discussions, so I'll make an inquiry. And strongly urge that, because I'm pretty sure they're gonna cover that, but I can strongly suggest that and that's appropriate for me to do.
Bill, let me add to that. Um. I'm pretty sure that's the document that came in today and I checked with John, the way, the proper way to um.
Okay.
Make it part of the record and available. We can't talk about it as a document tonight because we got it too late to. Add to the website twenty four hours or more in advance of the meeting. But I've put it on the OneDrive. Um, it's been distributed to you as part of the record. Uh, certainly between now and the nineteenth, we can be reading it, digesting it. Uh, deciding if it answers a lot of our questions. I think above and beyond that, Keith and together with Frank Boland's assistants. Is working his way down through the questions that we sent last week. I've also put those questions out on the OneDrive. So anybody who got the agenda for the meeting tonight can click on that particular link. And they can see what the questions were that we asked and they can see that report that came in. And in fact, it came in twice, once from a resident and once from Frank Boland himself and that one I got. An hour before the meeting and it, I didn't even bother putting it up because I knew we couldn't talk about it tonight. Um, so that's the nature of technical information that we're gonna have coming towards us anyway. Okay, that's everybody. I haven't had a chance to talk yet and I would like to offer my views before we go back for a second bites of the apple, so um, here are mine. Um. I think the nature of the way we're getting the technical advice coming at us. And by that, I mean Keith with Frank Boland's assistants answering our questions. Uh, and with this report, which once you read it, you'll find it. It answers a lot of the questions that we had already uh, put out there, but you have to read it for yourself. Um. I'm comfortable with using the the strategy Beth uh, put out and Bill. Uh, wait, see what we get between now and the end of the hearing on the nineteenth. At that time, decide if we wanna continue the hearing and go for an expert, but. I would point out that uh, if we were gonna go out, start from scratch and hire an expert, we would probably go to Frank Boland. Cause his research and teaching background is in exactly this field. Uh, I looked at the website of Yukon and and the different physical oceanographers that they have and. They have got all sorts of people. They work in the the Indian Ocean and they work in the Caribbean and they have some local interests too, but Frank deals with. Coastal sediment movement, water movement processes, which is exactly the technical issue we're talking about. And he's familiar with this and he's being paid, if he's being paid, he's being paid by the town and that's exactly. If we went out to hire an expert, that's what we'd want, someone with his qualifications paid for by the town. So we're kinda getting that now unless we think because he's their expert, he's not gonna give us. The right answers that we need and and I don't believe that. I mean, I know both these guys. They're professionals and if we ask them the right question, they'll give us an answer to our question. So I don't think we have to worry about not getting proper expert advice. We'll get it if our questions were reasonable and I thought we had really good questions. So that's my view on the expert. I would suggest we wait and see where we end up with the hearing. Um, and use what DACA with Dr. Boland gives us as responses to the questions. And then consider the application, as Bill said, on its merit. We just can't go back and look at what started in nineteen sixty seven and got big time in the eighties. That's not what legally we can do with this application. We have to review the application on its own merits. So that's um, that's the expert part. The DEP thing, uh, I worked there for thirty three years. Uh, so I I have a hard time saying this, but I agree with Nip. That's the kind of, you know, it's it's a big agency with huge different responsibilities and not many people to deal with each one. So they're likely to say hire an expert. They're likely to say town residents kind of try and work together. Um, and a referral to get at the technical basis for the residents' concerns and where the sand might be going. Isn't gonna come from DEP. I do think making a referral to him is a good idea, but for a different reason. And I think that referral can wait until we do our business. From the end of the hearing into the decision mode, we have a couple of more months after that. Here's where it would be useful to me to refer it to them. Uh, send them the application, send them that report that you'll read when you get to it. Uh, and maybe even the answers to those questions. But then ask them, what are DEP acceptable approaches to solving the problem? That's their business. This is in-water activity and. If they say build a groin or they say do maintenance dredging and suck sand from one place and put it in another and. You know, I'd like to hear what legally and environmentally they feel comfortable with as solutions here. Not for them to fix our technical problem. They're not the technical experts, but they are the people who would permit activities in the water. So I think it's very useful to to do a referral to them at some time down the road, not now. Um, so that's my points on the expert and the referral. So all five of us have spoken. Uh, Nip, you you got questions or further comment?
Uh, I got a couple of questions for Bill. Bill, I understand the logic of your uh, recommendation that we wait until we have the hearing. Um, but at that point, uh, we can ask for, as you say, we can ask for another sixty five days.
Thirty five.
Sorry.
It would be another thirty five year, ask for an extension of the public hearing time, which would be thirty five more days or a portion of that thirty five day period. Typically, they'll grant you thirty five, which you could then continue the public hearing.
Okay, so that's even worse than I thought. So if we make that decision. And the the decision at that point is that we wanna have an expert. We then need to find the expert, have them do their. Uh, research, due diligence, whatever, craft a report, come back to us. Presumably in another session of the public hearing. And then render a decision.
Correct.
That sounds to me tight if we're starting from scratch. So it would seem to me it might make some sense if we think we might want an expert. To at least start doing our homework on finding an expert, not to hire them. But to qualify them and to find it, you know, as Larry said, to. Start thinking about the scope and the finding out what it would cost and so forth. So if the decision is on the nineteenth, we wanna proceed with an expert or at least prepared to do that.
Okay, others. Got another one?
Yep.
Point number two for Bill. Uh, as Beth pointed out in the hearing. Uh, there was a similar application back in twenty eighteen. Which was approved and the town is back. Asking to do something that appears to be similar again. I would just ask that prior to the. Uh, continued hearing on the nineteenth, that you, Bill, familiarize yourself. With the previous application and be prepared to comment on what it said. And what has happened since then and to what extent is this similar or different. Which would be a springboard, um, to then ask the applicant to compare and contrast. Because when we mentioned, and Beth mentioned the previous application. Uh, in the public hearing, it did not appear that the person presenting the application. Was at that point up to speed on what was approved two and a half years ago.
Can certainly look into it.
Point, yeah, Bill, I was gonna say, could you do that? Put her on your to-do list.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Uh, others. Okay, um. Let's take these separately. Is there a motion on whether to hire an expert now? Or a motion to hire an expert at the end of the public hearing period, either one, however you wanna approach it? Dana?
I, Dana, will be it, it, does the motion have to be actually hire an expert or investigate? An expert, the possibility of an expert so that we can determine whether there's one available? How much they cost, et cetera, et cetera, so that by the time the next meeting rolls around. Um, if, 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 if what we find does not meet our criteria for deciding, we can hire the expert.
Yeah, I I'm fine with however you wanna frame the motion. I would point out, just listening to the nature of of your concern. In order to hire one, we'd have to do that investigation anyway, so it's. You know, the intent is to hire one, but we have to look into those things, yeah.
Yeah.
So is there a motion? I'm always happy to make a motion, but I also am happy to have one of you do it. Alright, I would move that we postpone decision on hiring an expert till. The conclusion of the public hearing and the beginning of our deliberation period.
I'll second that. Nick Tanner.
Uh, okay. Um, discussion on the motion. Dana?
So again, I'm I'm confused. Your, uh, the motion is to. Can you state the motion again because my underst- yeah, could you just restate the motion?
Um, it's to postpone a decision on hiring an expert till the end of the public hearing.
Okay, so my comment is if you postpone the measure and then you decide you need. An expert, as Nip says, you only have thirty five days.
No, you have, you have sixty five days.
For the decision.
For the decision, you have thirty days more. Here, here's a a scenario, uh, and and I see the flaw you're pointing out and you're correct. On the nineteenth, we can vote to request an extension of the hearing. I will have had Bill talk to Keith and the town ahead of time, so they'll know the answer they wanna give us to that question. If they say, no, we're not giving you an extension, then our task is to. End the hearing anyway and start our deliberations and decide if we wanna approve it or deny it. And approval can be with conditions. Um, or they might say, yeah, we'll, we'll give you that extension, but they would have to tee that up first. Because I wouldn't wanna strike them at nine o'clock on the nineteenth, which is the last day of our thirty five day. Initial public hearing period and have them say, I don't know what answer to give you. So I would have Bill work with them to make sure they know that that's a possibility. Now, to the issue of the expert, if we extend the hearing, now we have thirty five more days. Uh. To figure out who to bring on, what questions to ask them, what it's gonna cost. Doesn't cost us anything. It costs the town, but we're town residents, so we do have to keep that, you know, kind of in the back of our mind. Um, that would give us another thirty five days to get a report of, and that, you know, I'll tell you how these things go. They're slow. In sixty five days, you're not gonna get somebody to do a study. What you're gonna get them to do is look at the available evidence and bring their own experience and knowledge about coastal processes and they're gonna say. Okay, here's what's happening and. Here's what a possibility, a series of possibilities it could be done. It'll be that kind of a r- report you get in a month or two. So you, if you extend the hearing, you have thirty five days to get that information, then we have our sixty five day period to deliberate and decide. Um. The alternative motion would be, as you had suggested. Um, start the process of investigating who might be a likely candidate to do this. Assuming we don't think Dr. Boland and Keith and Concert are gonna give us. The kind of evidence we need and we need to go to some other person. I'm not convinced of that. That's why I didn't offer the motion that way. Uh, Nip.
Uh, Nick Tanner, Rick, I didn't understand your motion to preclude us doing homework before the nineteenth. To identify who we would use as uh, expert if on the nineteenth, we decided we wanted one. Right, I interpreted your motion simply to defer the motion on whether or not we. For the action on whether or not we hire an expert to the nineteenth and that's why I seconded it. I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And frankly, without having said anything in the motion, it doesn't preclude us from doing that investigation.
Right.
I think it's best if we tell Bill what we want and have him do the investigating as opposed. Otherwise, you know, picture me calling some university guy and saying, we have this issue, but I can't tell you. What it is because we're in a hearing and I can't talk to people about it, but we're thinking that we'd like to hire you as an expert. It's just. That's, his head will explode, her head will explode, but if Bill as staff takes what he knows us to want. And beats the bushes a little bit, uh, I don't mind that going on in in this period between now and the nineteenth.
I would do that as a separate motion to authorize that activity to.
We can put it in the same motion. I don't mind putting it in the same motion. Um, postpone decision on expert. To the one nineteen meeting. And have Bill investigate. Potential candidates in the interim. How's that sound?
Are commission members allowed to feed? Uh, candidates to Bill or?
Uh, yeah, I'm, my initial reaction is I don't see why not. We can talk to our. Uh, yeah, I'm, my initial reaction is I don't see why not. We can talk to our staff. That's kind of, I should have said that when I've always been saying, don't talk to anybody. I had a whole list of people not to talk to, but our staff we can talk to. If we need to talk to John Casey as our attorney, we can talk to him. Uh, what we can't do is go outside the people that work for us, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think it, it might, um, be more advantageous if there are suggestions. That they go through the chair as a funnel to me, um. I just, it it just may be helpful in big picture if I've get ten different people. Or fifteen, or as opposed to one or two, so, um. You know, whatever you need from me, I'm happy to help, it's just a thought, it I'm not wedded to it.
It's like we did the questions, you know, so we could have, beat the bushes on your own, send me your ideas. Little paragraph of what their, I've already done this for my own edification, just to see who's out there. Just web site serving, so a little bit about what their research issues are, yep.
Uh, Nick Tanner, uh, Rick, are you okay with taking on yet another task?
Actually, no, you know, I I I had said in a previous email, I was hoping someone would step up to be. A volunteer to be the administrator of this stuff.
I believe somebody did volunteer.
Well, you said you wanted to be on a committee and I, I, we could, we should talk about this now, Nip had volunteered. Uh, he said he'd be willing to be a member of a committee to to manage this whole thing. Uh, where, and I, we didn't communicate much more than that because I didn't wanna break these rules about. Public hearings and stuff, but we're in a public meeting now, so we can. Um, the only thing I I was wanting to be sure of is this is not. It's better if one person manages the administration of these things. If we get all our ideas on researchers to one person and he cut, he interacts with Bill. Rather than a committee try to do that, because as soon as you get more than two on a committee, you're breaking quorum rules if you have in a, a meeting. It becomes a meeting, and this person would not be establishing policy positions. Even draft ones for us, we're gonna do that in public meeting. It would be to do exactly what we're talking about. Find experts.
So that they.
Uh, tell Bill, you know, what we really ought to do is have Kurt, uh, Keith and the town people. Consider this other thing. That would be very helpful to me, and then I can refocus on our long-term uh, work issue.
Any other volunteers?
I'd volunteer, Dana, I'd volunteer, but I don't think Rick wants me to.
Why? Harass the thought. If he doesn't wanna do it, you'd be an ideal candidate, cause you're the only one who said, oh, he'd consider it.
Nip volunteered first, I was just volunteering to be a sidekick.
Yeah, well, I haven't seen whether Nip want, I mean, do you two guys wanna work together? That doesn't violate a quorum. I I'm very loose on how we do this, I think it's better if one person does the thing I'm envisioning, but.
Okay, I'll take the lead and I'll work with Dana.
Okay.
And I welcome input from uh, any uh, commission members who want to. Uh, provide input as part of this process.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you principally, Nip, uh, and also Dana. So we should all, if we have ideas on researchers, get them to Nip, and he can. Put together a list, uh, and that'll be a big help. Okay, so the motion is postpone the decision on hiring an expert to the January nineteenth meeting. And have Bill investigate potential candidates. Yeah, I can end at that. Okay, that's the motion. Any further comment on the motion, is it clear to you? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand in front of your screen. Okay, I see five in favor, opposed, there are none, cause we're five. Uh, okay, so it's unanimous on the motion, first motion. Uh, okay, is there a motion on referring this to DEEP? Hey, I'll do that. Um. I, um, move that we postpone a decision on referring. This application to the DEEP until we discuss further at our January nineteenth meeting. So a second to that, uh, Beth? Say again, Beth? Thank you. Um. Uh, defer, deferral. Okay, discussion on the motion. Yeah, none, all those in favor, raise your hand in front of the screen, please. Okay, that is also unanimous, five to zero. Uh, so, now, uh, are you agreeable that I will have Bill discuss with. Daco and the, and or the town, whoever he discusses it with. The possibility that we may want to request an extension of the hearing, and we won't know that till the last day of this thirty-five day period. So he would be, in effect, informing them that it's possible that we will make this request. And we would need to have a response that night, so that we wouldn't have to end the hearing and forestall any further input. See, the reason they'll probably say yes is, uh, if they don't give us a thirty-five day extension, our hands are tied, we almost have to. Reject, if we wanna get more information, extend the hearing, we have to reject the application, they have to go through this all over again. Nobody wants to do that, so it's likely we'll get the thirty-five days, but I think it's a courtesy to give them the heads up that it may be coming, so that they can. Get their ducks in a row and and have a a concrete answer for us that night. Uh, so is there any disagreement with having Bill engage in that communication? Seeing none, okay. Um, okay, so we'll do that. The agenda. Alright, that was everything on the. And, uh, that was everything on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, Beth Steele, motion to adjourn, second, anybody, Larry? Uh, okay, discussion, none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous, thank you all, appreciate it, and um, we'll move forward.